May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention? As there is no quorum requirement for the annual Fall Town Meeting and the Town Clerk is present to make record of the proceedings, the Chair calls to order the 2018 Annual Fall Town Meeting. This meeting is being broadcast live on the Groton Channel. It is also being videotaped for rebroadcast and posting on the Internet. In addition, it is being audiotaped for record-keeping purposes. Voters may sit in any available seat except the last two rows. Those are reserved for guests and non-voters, who are asked to remain quiet during the proceedings and silent during voting. If a voter wishes to address the meeting, please proceed to the nearest microphone and wait to be called on by the Chair. While it is not a legal requirement, you may, if you wish, provide your name and address. If at any time you are uncertain about what is happening, please speak up and let me know. The parliamentary phrase is “point of order,” but saying “question, help,” or any such phrase will do. You should then go to the microphone and after I call on you, state your question. Please do not be shy about this. If you do not understand what’s happening, chances are other voters do not either. The Chair has taken several steps to speed up the proceedings. There will be no announcements unrelated to the business of this meeting. Primary proponents and primary opponents of Articles have been asked to keep their remarks to seven minutes maximum. They will be timed and asked to conclude their remarks at seven minutes. There are some things that you as voters can do to help the Chair. Please be sure you have your voter card. The color is green. Do not lose it. If the Chair is uncertain on a voice vote, we may vote by raising the cards. If we need to count votes, only voters with a card will be counted. Please be sure you have the informational packet and town warrant and other materials from the table in the hallway. The informational packet contains the main motions to be made tonight and is an important reference tool. Please take this time to silence your electronic devices. If you address the meeting, please be sure your remarks pertain to the motion on the floor. Please direct all comments and questions to the moderator and avoid the temptation to engage others in a dialogue or a question-and-answer session. If you ask a question, the Chair will attempt to solicit an answer from the appropriate Prior to addressing the meeting, please consider whether the point or question has already been made and whether it really needs repeating. The Chair may point out repetitious comments, not to impede any voter’s right to speak, but as a way to speed along the meeting. Please be advised, tonight we have a new town council. Attorney Paul Durentis of Brooks &amp; Durentis, PC of Boston. Welcome, Mr. Durentis. The Chair has been asked to provide an update on the Groton Town Charter, which was approved by the April 2017 Town Meeting vote and subsequently revised by the April 2018 Town Meeting vote, has been submitted to the State Legislature for approval in the current informal session as House Bill 4893. The charter revisions will take effect after approval by the Legislature. The state election is scheduled for November 6th. The Town Clerk advises that early voting is available from October 22nd to November 2nd at the Town Hall. Please see the Town Clerk’s office for the schedule of when early voting is open. Absentee ballots are also now available. Tonight, two town meetings are scheduled to occur at the same time. We have nineteen Articles on the warrant for the regular Fall Town Meeting and we have three Articles on the warrant for the special Town Meeting to begin at about 7:30. A quorum of one hundred and fifty-six voters is required for the special Town Meeting. At about 7:30, the Chair will lead the meeting through the procedures for recessing the regular Town Meeting and calling to order the special Town Meeting. The plan is to complete at least the business of the special Town Meeting tonight and potentially all business from the regular Town Meeting. If a second night is needed, the plan is to adjourn to October 15th at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium as October 8th is a holiday. Please join me in a moment of silence as we remember those Grotonians who have passed Thank you. We have with us tonight three Scouts from Girl Scout Troops 66508 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All three have plans to earn their Gold Award, the highest award in Girl Scouts. We have Mandy Taylor, whose Gold Award service project is to help middle schoolers with time management and organization skills. Laura Stekowitz, whose service project is to start French language workshops at the Groton-Dunsable Regional High School. And Taryn Emmerly, who is seeking to make a positive impact on an environmental issue in our community. Ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, ladies. The Chair has determined that the warrant has been duly posted and will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrants. It has been moved and seconded to waive the reading of the warrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the reading of the warrant is waived. Article One, Mr. Pease.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I’m short. Article One, prior year bills. I move that the sum of $1,067.68 be hereby transferred from the excess and deficiency fund, free cash, for the payment of the following bills of prior fiscal years. To Megan Foster, $177.13. To Lightmore, $325. Liberty Supply, $118. Liberty Supply, $75. Liberty Supply, $161. Nashua Animal Hospital, $79.06. Nashua Animal Hospital, $132.49.
Article One has been moved and seconded, Mr. Pease.
The total request is $1,067.68. This is to pay bills that we incurred after the end of our fiscal year and need Town Meeting’s approval to pay.
Are there any questions on Article One? By law, it requires a four-fifths majority vote. If there are no questions, the Chair will call for the vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article One signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, Article One passes by a unanimous vote. Article Two, Mr. Orket.
I move that the sum of $40,000 be transferred from the Water Enterprise surplus to the fiscal year 2019 Water Department budget for general expenses.
Article Two has been moved and seconded, Mr. Orket.
These sums of monies are for settling of three union contracts.
Are there any questions under Article Two? Seeing no questions, all in favor of the main motion under Article Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, Article Two passes by a majority vote. Article Three, Mr. Gominer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the sum of $4,000 be transferred from the Sewer Enterprise Fund surplus to the fiscal year 2019 Sewer Enterprise Department budget for general expenses.
Article Three has been moved and seconded, Mr. Gominer.
This is to account for the new contracts with employees which came into effect after the budget was approved in the spring.
There are questions under Article Three. Please go to the microphone, sir.
I thought I heard the word forty thousand. That says four...
There was a typo previously.
The correct number is four thousand.
Four thousand.
Are there other questions?
I think you read four thousand.
You read four thousand, correct, sir?
Yes, I read four.
Okay. And the motion that the Town Clerk has is correct. All those in favor of the main motion under Article Three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article Three passes by a unanimous vote. Mr. Deegan was not able to be here tonight. This was originally supposed to be his article, so Mr. Geiger is doing us the favor of filling in. At a moment’s notice.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to all. I move the sum of $550,000 be transferred from the excess and deficiency fund, also known as free cash, to be added to the sum already deposited in the capitalization fund.
Article Four has been moved and seconded, Mr. Geiger.
The balance in the capital stabilization fund is $59,416. The town’s financial management goal is to achieve and maintain a balance in the capital stabilization fund, equal to one and a half percent of the town’s total annual budget. Approval of this motion will add $59,416 to the existing capital stabilization fund, thus meeting the desired financial management goal for fiscal year 2019. The Select Board by a vote of four in favor, no abstentions, and one nod in favor recommends approval of this motion.
The Chair will recognize Select Board Member Allison Minugian for an opposing viewpoint.
So, I appreciate the opportunity to briefly speak. As an individual, I am not able to support the next five Articles, and the reasoning is the same across the board. Free cash is the sum of revenues that come in greater than anticipated and expenses that come in lesser than anticipated. This conservative budgeting yields funds left over at the end of the year and has been beneficial to the town of Groton. That said, I think that as a community, we need more information and we need to be having higher-level conversations about our free cash. We can leave it in free cash. We can save it into a variety of different funds. We can use it to fund capital projects, smaller projects, design fees. But in order to make our decisions responsibly, we need to understand what all of the projects are that are currently on the boards, what are present for the near term, and what are anticipated down the line. And I don’t think that we currently have that information, so we can’t make an informed decision. Just something to think about.
Are there questions or comments on Article Four? It requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Chair will hear it again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article Four passes by a majority vote. Unless there are seven voters who wish to challenge the ruling of the Chair. Not seeing seven voters, we’ll move to Article Five, Mr. Pease.
I move that the sum of $54,000 be transferred from the excess and deficiency fund, free cash, to be added to the sum already on deposit in the stabilization fund.
Article Five has been moved and seconded, Mr. Pease.
As you can see on the last page of your voter packet, this will bring the total balance of the fund to $1,893,494.
Are there comments or questions under Article Five? Requires a majority vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article Five passes by a majority vote. Article Six, Mr. Pease.
I move that the sum of $600,000 be transferred from the excess and deficiency fund, free cash, to be added to the sum already on deposit in the Groton-Dunsable Regional School District Capital Stabilization Fund.
Article Six has been moved and seconded, Mr. Pease.
That will bring the total amount in the fund to $680,153.
Are there any comments or questions? Ms. Gilbert, did you have two slides, please? Committee report from Marlena Gilbert, Chair of the Groton-Dunsable Regional School Committee.
So, I just wanted to share information in regard to this warrant article. Funds will be transferred into, if approved, into the municipal-controlled cap stabilization fund for the Grotons’ portion of capital expenses. The first slide you’ll see is for FY20’s proposed capital items, total of approximately 460. The next slide is for FY20, and that total is about 375. Total for two years is $835,000, not including the fails repair in our district. Thank you.
Oh, I’m sorry.
Sure.
The school committee did vote to recommend the transfer of funds for the capital fund for Article Six.
There are comments? Yes, sir. Down front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Minugian, 55 Pepperell Road. I’m absolutely in favor of putting money into the school system capitalization fund, but I’m absolutely not in favor of spending money at Fall Town Meeting unless it’s an emergency or very time-dependent. And the reason for that is, in the Spring Town Meeting, we look at the entire budget, everything, all of our needs, and by spending money now, that means there’s less money to look at when we’re looking at the entire budget. We’re really spending this money without thinking about the impact on the fall budget because we don’t see a budget. So, again, I would recommend that we do not spend money unless it’s an emergency or very time-dependent at this Town Meeting. Rather, do it in the spring when we’re looking at all of our needs and all of our money. As Allison pointed out, free cash does not have to be spent now. It can be spent in the spring, in the context of the entire budget. Thank you.
Mr. Pease.
So, we’re in agreement. This is not spending the money. This is allocating the money to a fund. In the spring, people will have an option to whether or not to spend this money from those funds. So, this is not spending, it is allocating.
Yes, sir, in the back.
Since you varied a little bit in that last article on allowing reference to the spending of money, is it... Can you confirm that once you put it in stabilization, at least in the previous Articles, doesn’t that take a two-thirds vote at a Town Meeting to take out?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that’s... I think that should be made clear. It’s a little more difficult once it goes in. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article Six? Requires a majority vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, Article Six passes by a majority vote. Article Seven, Mr. Geiger.
I move that the sum of $230,000 be hereby appropriated to be expended by the Town Manager for the purpose of hiring an architect or engineer pursuant to the designer selection guidelines adopted by the Board of Selectmen in December 2010 for the design or design and construction bidding process of a new highway garage and/or the renovation and expansion of the current highway garage, and all costs associated and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, $230,000 be hereby transferred from the excess and deficiency fund, also known as free cash.
Article Seven has been moved and seconded, Mr. Geiger.
When the current highway garage was originally constructed in 1989, that was the same year that the new police station was built. The scope and design of the building, the highway garage building, did not meet the space needs of what is now known as the Department of Public Works. Funded by a state grant, the salt shed was built around 1989 at no cost to the town. The large coal storage building was constructed in two phases, the first in the early 1990s out of pieces of the old highway garage, and the second phase soon after. The second phase half is a building that originally was on property now occupied by River Court in West Groton. Highway Department employees disassembled that structure in West Groton, moved it, and reassembled it at its present location. The Department of Public Works has been categorized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as first responders. The Department of Public Works supports all other town departments, including police, fire, water, Town Hall, and all the other buildings in the school district, on a daily basis for fuel. In addition, the Department of Public Works is responsible for care of town roads, snow removal operations, grass cutting and care, including all the town athletics fields and playgrounds of all town property. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, year-round, the Department of Public Works needs to be ready to respond to all sorts of town emergency situations. Current conditions of the public works buildings do not meet occupational safety standards or comply with the state’s building codes. Approval of this motion will allow the town to secure design and building-level documents that will determine how best to address the Department of Public Work needs in the most cost-effective manner, as well as provide an adequately determined potential... an accurately determined potential cost for the work. Having this information will allow town government to adequately inform voters of the plan and estimated total cost at a future Town Meeting. The Select Board by a vote of three in favor, one abstaining, and one nod in favor, voted to recommend approval of this motion.
I believe we have our presentation from Mr. Greg Yanchenko, who is a Groton resident and architect who was contracted to do a preliminary study.
Good evening. Tonight, what I’ll do is I’ll give you a quick overview of the existing facilities. I will then show you how the breakdown of the proposed estimate for the work will be done. So, the first slide, what you’ll see is the existing conditions. Basically, you can break the site down at the DPW into six building facilities and two ancillary facilities. Next slide, please. The first slide that I show you is the current maintenance garage. As Selectman Geiger said, this was built in 1989. It has not had any major updates or repairs or renovations over the years, and it largest the house... houses large service vehicles as well as serves as the vehicle repair garage. The deficiencies include the building envelope is severely deteriorated, there’s minimal insulation and heating in there, and probably the most serious issue is the ventilation. If you go down there now, it definitely presents a safety hazard to the employees as they are breathing in a lot of the fumes and stuff from the vehicles because there’s not a proper ventilation system in it. The next structure is what we refer to as the storage and warehouse. We’re recommending... excuse me, I should just back up quickly. As far as the first building, what we are recommending is that that building be upgraded and renovated. The second building that I show you up on the slide is what we call the storage and warehouse. This was, again, as described, built from salvaged materials. There is no heat in the building, the roof leaks, it does not meet code, and it houses many of the smaller vehicles such as the pickup trucks and some of the sweepers and stuff that are used by the town, as well as some of the miscellaneous materials like the combs, signs, and tires. The next structure, and we’re recommending that this be replaced in its entirety. The next structure that you’ll see is what we call the storage barn. As you can see by the one slide over here, that it is severely deteriorated, and, again, this houses what the... we refer to as the spare parts and vehicles. What the DPW has done to be very cost-efficient is they go on, whether it be eBay or other towns and stuff, and buy some of their excess or spare equipment so that they can salvage the parts from that to keep the current equipment that we have in town running. So, I mean, we have to give Tom and his crew a lot of credit because they are doing the best they can to maintain these facilities at the most economical cost. And so, where a town might be getting rid of a sidewalk sweeper or something that maybe is five years old, and they think it’s hit its life expectancy, Tom and his crew can get like another three to five years out of it by repairing it and using some of these salvaged parts. And so, that’s what he stores in this structure. As you can see, it is unsound and it is failing at this point, provides no weather protection for any of this salvage equipment, and also does not meet code. So, we are recommending that that facility be completely demolished. The next structure that you see is, again, what we call a storage shed. We recommend that this facility be demolished. This houses some of the cold patch and asphalt and materials like that that are used on the roads. Completely structurally unsound, again, provides no weather protection and does not meet code. The next structure you’ll see is one of the sand and salt storage structures. We’re recommending that this be replaced, you know, either under this project or a future date. And again, it just houses the sand and salt. The structure is in poor condition, but it’s not, you know, something that can be repaired temporarily, provides minimal weather protection, and does not meet code. When I say not does not meet code, in addition to the obvious ones, but a lot of it’s seismic code, and for those that you may not understand is, while Massachusetts is not necessarily prone to a lot of earthquakes and stuff, the seismic code addresses more than that. It addresses the lateral stability of the facility. The next slide shows the, what we refer to as a fabric salt storage facility. This is relatively new, it’s only about five years old, it’s in great shape, Tom and his crews have been maintaining it, so we’re anticipating that nothing needs to be done under the routine maintenance on this. The next two structures that I’m going to show you is what I refer to, the ancillary structures. The next one is number seven, which is the materials bins. And again, all this is... this is for spoil, sand, rocks, you know, that the guys bring in from the roads, or if they need to get some gravel or something, they would just store this and this. So, again, it’s in fair condition, they’re all like that, they’re just a bunch of blocks that hold the sand and everything in its place. Ideally, this will be relocated, you’ll see in the new plan why we’re recommending that. And then, the final structure that you’ll see is the fueling station. Again, the fueling station was recently updated in the past few years. It’s... we recommend routine maintenance on that, and it serves all the needs for the town facilities as far as fueling. So, just to give you a quick highlight on the site, it’s serviced by the municipal electric, it has onsite well and onsite septic, and there is no gas service. The paving in there is in somewhat poor condition only because of the soil conditions, and most important, there’s no emergency generator. As it was mentioned, DPW is considered part of the Critical Response Crews, so it’d be nice if they were up and running in case of a power outage or some type of emergency. The next slide I’m going to show you is what we propose for the renovations. As you can see, which was building number one, kind of in the middle there, is the existing garage, which we would say renovate that and bring that up to code and make it usable again. The next building, which is kind of a long building with the red arrows going in and out, that is what we would replace the salvaged barn, salvaged materials, for some of the vehicles and to expand the other vehicles. So, we’d tear that existing structure down, build a new structure. It’s a relatively inexpensive structure in the sense that all it would be is weather tight with minimal heating in there to keep the trucks above freezing and everything. But you don’t need... but you don't need anything special like toilets or offices or anything like that. In order to achieve that, so as the trucks come out, and we're proposing one way, you'll see that the, on this side in the middle where the arrow is, that is where the current material bins are, so that's why they would have to be relocated. We're proposing relocating them up in the top where that long rectangle is. And then, as far as the new salt storage, we're proposing that that would be another fabric structure next to the existing structure, fabric structure. Next slide, please. This is the proposed plan for the interior, the existing garage. What we would do is reconfigure the office locker rooms and stuff to give the crews what they need. The vehicle repair bays would remain, we'd move the tool room over, and we'd introduce a wash bay. Over the past few years, the state and DPE and everything has determined that you do need wash bays for the vehicles because you're no longer allowed to wash them outside and everything, let the salts and stuff run off. So, we do need to get a wash bay structure put in for this new facility. The next slide, as I showed you, is just the basics, you know, for lack of a better word, warehouse and storage for the large vehicles. As you can see, the facility is being designed to meet current needs and future expansion needs, basically based on the amount of equipment that's currently used by the DPW and everything. There would only be about three spare spaces, and again, that's relative because there are some operations and everything that happen over in West Groton that some of that equipment may be brought over here in a more permanent weather tight facility. Next slide, please. So, just to break down the cost, the design fees for architectural engineering are estimated at $185,000. The OPM, which is the owner's project manager, is required by state statute for any projects over $1.5 million, you must retain, the town or municipality must retain, an owner's project manager. As I mentioned to you that the paving is in poor shape primarily due to some of the soil conditions, so before any new structure or anything went up, we would propose that there be a geotech report in the areas of where the building would go. We'd obviously need a topographic survey, and then when the project goes out to bidding, the estimate on that is about $5,000. So that's how you come up to the $223,000 or the $230,000 that the town is requesting for this. The next slide shows you what would happen if it goes into construction. Again, the $70,000 is for the architect or engineer to manage the project during construction. Again, the OPM would have to continue on. There are some testing services, that's for concrete inspection of rebar and things like that, and then what they call the clerk of the works. This is the individual that's onsite during the normal workday when the contractor is out there so that he can monitor or she can monitor the construction. Next slide, please. So as we go through, what we've done is we've, you know, kind of broken down where we see the cost. Renovate the existing garage and office building is about $1.1 million. That new storage vehicle that I, garage that I was telling you about for the vehicles would be about $1.9. The paving work would be about $150,000, and that may actually go down depending if we can use the chapter 90, you know, if Tom can perform that work, Tom Delaney being the superintendent of the DPWs. The materials bins, again, we've put in a line item for that, but potentially that could be done by the DPW crews. A new salt, sand storage facility, which is, be one of those fabric structures, and then finally demolition of some of the existing facilities as we talked. Next slide. So as you can see, the total for the project from design cost, construction cost, and all the services, totals to be about $3.9, almost $4 million. Tonight's article is only to approve the design fees for $230,000, and as you can see by the slides and everything, this is a real needs, this is not, you know, Tom asking for things that are not reasonable. We've worked closely with him, he's tried to be as economical and efficient in the layout and the design of the building, so we're only asking for the minimal structures to keep the DPW up and running. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yanchenko. Are there any comments or questions on Article VII? Yes, sir, in the back.
Mr. Moderator, I'd just be curious what the life expectancy of these fabric buildings is. Not against them, just curious.
Mr. Yanchenko.
Well, the fabric buildings last as long as they're maintained, you know, first of all, so if a, one of the sides comes loose, starts blowing in the breeze, if you tighten them down, they're going to last longer. It is New England, Florida and Texas have the same problems. You never can tell with the weather, you know, if we get strong gust of winds and stuff, there's a potential for some damage or, you know, to the fabric structures. But based on what we've seen and what the manufacturer recommends, there's no reason why you can't get, you know, 15, 20 years out of these fabric structures, as long as they're maintained properly and they're not, you know, and they're, like I said, just maintenance really more than anything else.
Down front, Mr. Minnigan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, looks like the project would cost about $3.75 million. What is the estimated impact on the operational budget? That is to say, what are the payments that we're going to have to make every, what's the estimated amount of payments annually, say, for the operational budget to pay for this?
Mr. Haddad, Town Manager.
The $223,000 tonight has no impact, obviously, because it's coming from free cash. Should the town meeting approve this tonight, we will start the process to design and put out to bid the project with the intention of coming back to the Springtown meeting, seeking the necessary funds to construct the building, which right now is estimated to be at the $3.7 million number. If that is approved, in conjunction with Article VIII, which is the next article you'll be discussing tonight, which is the library roof project, which is estimated to be, right now, around $1 million, we would go out to bid, we would go out to bond on a $5 million bond issue, and we would ask the voters in Groton to exclude that from Proposition Two and a Half and do it as a debt exclusion. Don, do you have a slide? I apologize for the technical difficulties, but based on our estimates right now, taking into consideration the senior center project that was passed, and previously excluded projects that have been approved, like the center fire station, we anticipate that this project will cost, next fiscal year, if approved, in debt service, $102,000 would be an interest payment in fiscal year 2019, which would cost the average taxpayer $25 on their bill or seven cents. In fiscal year 2020, we would go out to bond on the permanent, we would also permanently finance the senior center, and we would look at an 80 cent increase on the tax rate or $98 over the previous year's tax bill. That's the anticipated cost. Thank you.
In the back, Ms. Gilbert.
Hi, I know there was some discussion, I think at a Board of Selectmen meeting I attended, about having a municipal building committee established and reviewing all of our property. So what I wanted to know is, were the, first of all, if the committee was already established, I'm assuming it has, were these buildings included in that inventory? How far has that work gone? My concern is how the new senior center project, this project, Florence Roach, Prescott, all play a role in my taxes six years from now.
That committee has not been established yet. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are in the process of reviewing the proposed charge of that committee. That committee will be created, hopefully sometime this fall, to take on the capital projects. With regards to the highway garage project, we would appoint a separate building committee to help design and work with the architect moving forward, but the committee that you're asking for is under consideration right now, and it'll be on one of the first agendas of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee after town meeting.
In the back, yes, sir. So, a couple of points. First, I'd like to ask the FINCOM's opinion on this, it was listed here as at town meeting.
Mr. Green.
So the final vote of the Finance Committee in support of this recommendation was six in favor and one against.
Thank you. So to a point made earlier about big ticket items, big spending happening at the Fall Town Meeting rather than the Spring, I think this is as good an example as you'll see of this. I'm very concerned that if we vote yes here, we've effectively voted yes to a $4 million project. The point made earlier about a comprehensive review of capital planning, I think that review should include this, and this should not be done absent that review. As I recall, six months ago, this project was a fluff and buff project for a few hundred thousand dollars, and has now become a $4 million project in the space of six months, implying that we really don't have a well-established capital plan that outlines our long-term capital needs, and if we fund this out of context of that capital plan, what will the other things that we have to either forego because we don't have the money, or add to this and create higher priority items that we'll have to add to this where we would have deferred this had we known about those other items? Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Hi, my name's Leanna Martin. I'm just curious as to what the lifespan of the proposed design is going to be. I know this was, last one was built in 1989, so if we're going to build something in 2019, how long do we expect it to last? And then, finally, I wanted to ask, who's going to review the bids and designs, and if there will be any public involvement in that process as well?
Mr. Yanchenko.
So, over the years, they've improved pre-engineered buildings, the way you approach buildings and everything, and so the materials that were available in 1989 have significantly improved to this point in time. So there's no reason with proper maintenance, everything, that the proposed structures that we're talking about, excluding the fabric structure, that you shouldn't be able to get a 40 to 50-year life expectancy out. Now, this still means that mechanical systems, toilets and stuff, will have to be replaced, and that's usually closer to like a 25 to 30-year life expectancy, but the actual structure itself, there's no reason why, with proper maintenance, that it shouldn't last 50 years.
Mr. Haddad.
With regards to your second question, there will be a building committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager that would oversee this project, working with the architect to design it. There would be posted public meetings, the public would have the opportunity to come in and have input into the design, and then when we go out to bid, town meeting would have the final approval on the project.
And will that board have a registered professional engineer on it?
Well, that's why we have, that's why we have an architect who has a set of engineers who works with the building committee. We could, we could appoint somebody that's a registered engineer, but that's why we have an architect, a professional architect and engineer for him to work with the building committee in the design and the development of the construction documents.
Absolutely. I'm just wondering if there's one that's going to represent the town, not just necessarily the architect's best interest or the construction's best interest.
We'll put out a call for volunteers to serve on the committee, and if one steps forward, absolutely.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Are there other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Prest.
I just want to reinforce the point that's been made several times. What we're voting on tonight is the money for the engineering and design. I think everybody here has probably been to the Highway Department in some form or another, probably to drop off trash or recycling. I invite you to get a tour of that facility between now and next year before the final decision is made on the construction of the building. I think you'll be absolutely shocked as to what you see. That place where all the equipment is stored, and we're so highly dependent upon the Highway Department for plowing, for paving the roads, for fixing potholes, that we have to have something better than we have, or we're going to start losing equipment. I mean, it is a mess, and it's a mess because the buildings are falling down, they're really, really old, maybe they weren't built the way they should have been back in 1989, but I think we have to support the Highway Department all the way, and if you have a problem with the $4 million, let's take a look at it at the Springtown meeting, but between now and then, get ahold of Tom Delaney and ask for a tour. He's given tours in the past, but he's been disappointed that not enough people have actually asked to come out and see it. My brother Val Prest and I have spent almost a half a day with Tom Delaney back in the spring, taking a tour, and we were absolutely shocked. I couldn't believe it, when you see buildings with walls missing or falling off, and I think you need to go take a look at it. But in the meantime, let's vote for the $230,000 approximately to at least get the design phase going. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions under Article VII? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, Article VII passes by a majority vote. Ladies and gentlemen, it's now 7:45 PM, and it's time to call the special town meeting. The Chair will accept a motion to recess the annual Fall Town Meeting until the special town meeting is recessed and dissolved. It has been moved and seconded to recess the annual Fall Town Meeting until the special town meeting is recessed or dissolved, requires a majority vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the annual Fall Town Meeting is recessed. As of 7:39 PM tonight, there are 248 voters present. The Chair declares the presence of a quorum and will call to order the special town meeting. The announcements made at the start of the regular Fall Town Meeting apply here as well. Chair will hear a motion to waive the reading of the warrant for the special town meeting. A motion has been made and seconded to waive the reading of the warrant, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the reading of the warrant has been waived. We'll go to Article I, Wage and Classification Schedule, Mr. Geiger.
I move that the town, I move that the town of Groton Wage and Classification Schedule, as shown in Appendix A of the warrant for the October 1st, 2018 Special Town Meeting, be adopted for fiscal year 2019.
Article I has been moved and seconded. Mr. Geiger.
The Wage and Classification Schedule sets salaries and hourly rates for town employees who are not represented by a union. Passage of this article will update the town's wage and classification schedule, and you'll find that in the warrant on page 38, Appendix A, to provide increased salaries and hourly rates during fiscal year 2019 by the same percentage provided to members of the Town Supervisors Union for our unrepresented employees.
Are there questions or comments under Article I? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article I passes by unanimous vote. Article II, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town of Groton fiscal year 2019 operating budget, as adopted under Article IV of the April 30th, 2018 Springtown Meeting, be hereby amended as shown on the following chart. Each line item to be considered as a separate appropriation for the purposes voted, and to appropriate from emergency medical services receipts reserved, the sum of $80,000 to fire and emergency medical services, and to appropriate the sum of $85,184 from the fiscal year 2019 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to fund said increases for a total of $165,184.
Article II has been moved and seconded. Mr. Green.
So, you're not expected to be able to read this slide, but have to present it as part of the motion, it is in your information packet. Moving on to Slide Four, so why part of a special town meeting? Most importantly, town meeting is the sole spending authority. We cannot spend money in this town without town meeting approval. As was mentioned in the motion, the fiscal year 2019 budget was passed back in the spring, and there are some adjustments that we need to make now, and again, we cannot make them without town meeting approval. The first is, we need the budget to reflect collective bargaining agreements. The second is that we are proposing that we add two full-time firefighters, and the third, as was mentioned in the opening to town meeting, we now have new town council, and there are some additional costs associated with that. On to Slide Five. On to Slide 5. So, when we created the budget and presented it at the Spring Town Meeting, we were still in negotiations with seven of the town unions for employees of the town. The related line items obviously could not accurately reflect the results of those negotiations. Those negotiations, the collective bargaining associated with those unions has come to a conclusion and been ratified by the select board. We now have the accurate numbers, and we want to reflect those numbers in the line item appropriations for each of those different areas. On to Slide 6. Again, there was an increase in town council expense due to selection of a new firm, so we need to increase the line item related to town council expenses by 20,000. And as I mentioned, there, we are proposing that we add two additional full-time firefighters. The anticipated start date for those firefighters would be January 1st, so it is projected that the cost of those firefighters would be in the neighborhood of $74,539, and we are proposing that we cover the cost of those two additional firefighters for this year through ambulance receipts. We also looked at future years. The finance committee obviously wouldn't recommend something unless we thought it was sustainable, so we looked at the cost in future years, and it is expected that we would cover the cost of the two full-time firefighters on an ongoing basis using recurring ambulance receipts. In FY '20, we were expecting $75,000 from ambulance receipts. An increase in mail tax, we have additional restaurants coming online in town, and so we are, we are expecting that we will have $20,000 from increased mails taxes in FY '20 to apply to the firefighters. And then finally, there is additional levy limit capacity available in that when we approved the budget, we were under the levy limit, and in addition, we are getting close to certifying new growth in town, and between new growth and the fact that we're under the levy limit when we pass the original budget means that there is levy capacity available to fund these positions this year. On to Slide 7. So what's the impact to the tax rate? At Spring Town Meeting FY '19, the budget was approved at the top number, I'm not going to read it, with an estimated tax rate of 1902. This new amended budget, if approved tonight, will be the second number with an estimated tax rate of 1899. And you might say, okay, how do we have additional spending but yet decrease the tax rate? The answer is that we estimated the amount of state aid that we'd be getting. We now have the final numbers from the state, we got those back in July. We have updated new growth numbers. The assessor's office is looking to have the new growth numbers certified by the end of October, but we have new growth numbers, and there was strong growth. Use of ambulance receipts to fund the additional firefighters also helps to do that. And then again, reduction in expected FY '19 expenses due to union negotiations. The select board and the finance committee worked in collaboration with the town manager and his finance team, gave him some targets as to how he could negotiate with the unions that would be both fair, but would result in some reductions in expense to the town, and he was successfully able to do that. And so, Slide 8. You might ask, why now? And the answer is that the changes to the budget need to be made prior to setting the tax rate, and particularly why a special meeting, a special town meeting, by doing special town meeting, assuming that you approve these changes tonight, once we dissolve the meeting, that allows the finance team to immediately start implementing the results of these budget changes. Thank you.
I believe we have a committed report from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Geiger.
The select board and the finance committee have agreed to add two permanent full-time professional firefighter EMTs to the fire department's budget in fiscal year 2019. This is a necessary first step to protect the town and its residents due to staffing shortages that the town has been facing for the last several years. While the fire department has been able to address these shortages with its dedicated call department members, it's becoming increasingly difficult to fill these shifts on a regular There is a great deal of information available, beginning at the bottom of page 28 and continuing two-thirds of the way down, page 30, about this desire to add these two firefighters. It is important to note that the Fire Department Task Force Study Committee...
Mr. Hadad, could you, could you investigate the cause of that noise? Sorry, Mr. Geiger.
It's important to note that the fire...
Oh, Mr. Geiger, I can't hear you.
Is that... Sure. I don't have all this memorized.
Thank you, sir.
Hello? Hello? The light gets less as they move me around here. It's important to note that the Fire Department Task Force Study Committee...
Can everybody hear him?
Hello?
Yeah, that works.
Like eating an ice cream cone. All right. It's important to note that the Fire Department Task Force Study Committee has begun its work to determine whether or not to recommend a permanent increase in staffing to provide for 24-by-7 fire station coverage. This will need several months to complete their work, and it will take... Final recommendations to the select board and the finance committee. However, the immediate need for two additional firefighters, EMTs, cannot wait. To illustrate the need, one needs to look no further than what has transpired over the past two and a half years, since January 2016. During the period from January 2016 through December 2016, there were 262 shifts. Shifts with less than optimum coverage were a total of 28. Vacant full-time shifts were 234. From January 2017 to December 2017, there were 260 shifts. Fifty-three of those shifts had less than optimum coverage, and 255 of those shifts did not have full-time coverage. January 2018 to present, which is 152 shifts, 35 did not have optimum coverage, optimal coverage, and 40 did not have full-time shift coverage. This cannot continue for several reasons. First, the first, the full-time staff has experienced a high level of overtime that is demanding and leading to burnout and errors and extra costs to the town. Those are overtime costs. Second, the fire chief is forced to serve as a firefighter EMT, serving as the fourth, third, or in some increases, second firefighter MT for coverage. Third, the department has lost 11 per diem firefighters and EMTs, mostly to other towns, over the last two years, further exacerbating the issue to, and reducing experienced coverage. Approving this article will allow our fire department, both professional and call firefighters, to have the capability to reliably provide fire station coverage for the current coverage hours. The select board voted unanimously to approve this motion.
Are there questions or comments under Article II? In front, we'll start, Mr. Manugian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's really a general question. Oftentimes, we see at-town meeting, but we don't necessarily hear from the people who are going to give us their opinion at-town meeting. I'd like to ask that we do it at a specific time, like maybe after the, the motion is read, if the people who have held back their opinions could state their opinion then, or somebody could state their opinion for them. But I am, I am and others are very interested in hearing what all board members' opinions are.
The chair will make the microphone available to board members who wish to share their opinion but does not have subpoena power to make them talk. Yes, Ms. Pine.
I'm going to try this microphone. I'm listed in the warrant as being at-town meeting, but as John Geiger read, I voted unanimously, I mean, I voted with the rest of the board members. I had more questions, and I asked them and listened to the discussion at our meeting last week, and so I'm in favor of this.
In the back, yes, sir.
So, in the discussion, there was a lot of talk about unfilled shifts, and there was no discussion of the needs that, or the calls related to previous years. So, it sounds like staffing's down, it continues to be a challenge, but I'd like to know if the needs of the town and our citizens are going up or down. And I'd also like to point out that we're taking money from the ambulance fund, recently had to pay one of those fees, and it was pretty stiff. So, you know, that is not just free money, that is another fee that we all are paying when we need that service. So, if I could hear from the fire chief, I'd appreciate it.
Chief McCurdy.
Thank you. The number of incidences in town have grown 18% over the last couple of years, with this year being the single largest increase that we've seen in almost a decade. In addition to that, we do have numerous non-emergency requirements dictated by mass general law. So inspections for the sale of homes, approvals of new buildings, sprinkler systems, inspections of schools, et cetera, those have gone up 6% over the last year and 4% the previous year before that.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Mary Jennings. Yes, I believe that the town invested money several years ago, I think it was done last year, for an audit of personnel needs in all departments, and at that time, I don't believe there was a recommendation for additional fire police, but definitely not at that time any recommendation for any new firefighters. We also have a committee, a fire department study committee, and I'm wondering how that audit, this fire study committee, fits in with the current recommendations, and why the audit didn't come up and surface these needs.
Mr. Pease. So there was a municipal audit done, and that audit did not include the fire department because an audit had already been done previously. Mr. Chief McCurdy, do you have the, in that audit recommended four full-time firefighters?
There's some question about that from another board member.
Chief McCurdy.
So, the final strategic plan for the fire department did recommend the addition of four additional career firefighters, EMTs, to the force. This was finalized in January, I apologize, December of last year. It was one of the first recommendations is to start to move in that direction.
Other questions or comments under Article II? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, Article II passes by a majority vote. Article III. Ms. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town, at that, excuse me, I move that the code of the town of Groton, Chapter 218 zoning, be hereby amended as follows, by amending Section 218-4, Section 218-13, and Section 218-16.1, as set forth in the warrant for the October 1st, 2018 special town meeting.
Article III has been moved and seconded. Ms. Pine.
Thank you. I'd like to give a short explanation of this article and how we got here. Two years ago, the voters of Massachusetts voted to legalize recreational marijuana statewide. The vote in Groton was 56% in favor of legalizing marijuana. After that vote, the state created the Cannabis Control Commission to develop the rules for the legal cultivation, sale, and use of marijuana. Following the guidelines of the Cannabis Control Commission, the planning board created zoning to codify exactly what kinds of recreational marijuana activities would be allowed in Groton. This zoning proposal was presented and passed by the voters at our annual town meeting this past spring, and that is currently in place. However, the select board heard from many people that they would like the opportunity to vote on what kind of marijuana activities would be allowed in Groton, and specifically to vote on whether or not to allow the sale of marijuana in Groton. So, non-binding ballot questions for each kind of marijuana activity that is allowed by the Cannabis Control Commission were presented to voters at the spring election. The results of the eight non-binding ballot questions are available, I think it's like the last page in the town meeting handout that was available out there. The results showed a strong preference to ban the retail sale of marijuana, and also to ban several of the other possible marijuana activities. Voters also gave their approval to allow independent testing laboratories and marijuana research facilities, and voters were about evenly split on allowing the cultivation of marijuana. The select board then crafted a proposal to amend our zoning to follow the wishes expressed by the voters, and that is what is before us tonight. So, the amendment that is proposed would ban the retail sale of marijuana in Groton. It would also ban craft marijuana cooperatives, it would ban the manufacture of marijuana products, it would ban marijuana micro businesses, and it would prohibit marijuana transporters from storing or warehousing marijuana products in Groton. The proposed, what's proposed tonight would allow one marijuana research facility, one marijuana testing facility, and one commercial marijuana cultivation facility. These three activities would only be allowed in specific districts, under specific rules, and only after receiving a special permit from the planning board. So the major differences between what is proposed in this amendment tonight and what is already in place is the ban on the sale of recreational marijuana and the bans on certain other marijuana activities. There's also an increase from two to three of the total number of allowed marijuana facilities in Groton. There's another piece of information about this article that you need to understand. The Cannabis Control Commission requires a two-step process to ban any specific marijuana activities. Therefore, if this article passes tonight, there will be a ballot question asking you to endorse this zoning at the November 6th election. If either the article tonight or the ballot question on the 6th fail, the zoning will stay the same as it is now. If the article tonight fails, there will be no ballot question, because we know that it has failed. I would like, in conclusion, I want to thank the planning board for doing the initial work of preparing the zoning bylaw that we passed last spring. With that zoning in place, Groton is in good shape. The proposal that we have before us tonight is to change it in an attempt to fine-tune it to be more in keeping with what the voters told us at the ballot last spring. I personally believe that the proposed amendment tonight is an improvement to the existing bylaw, but reasonable people can easily disagree on this. The vote on the select board was three in favor and two opposed to this article. We are presenting it for you, the voters, to make your decision. Thank you.
The chair will now open the floor to debate. Any questions?
Kathy Reif.
Hi, go ahead, Pam.
So, when we voted in the spring...
So, when we voted in the spring, it was a non-binding vote, so this seems like we're trying to make it binding. And also, I think the town needs more revenue, so I don't really support cutting off possible ways to collect revenue.
Other questions or comments on Article Three?
I have a...
Yes, ma'am, in the back.
I have a very simple question. There was a chart on Page 25 of the mailing, and I was wondering, the N probably means no, and the PB means planning board, but I couldn't find that explained anywhere, is that correct?
Ms. Pine.
That is correct. The N means not allowed, and the PB means you have to get a special permit from the planning board.
Thanks, it wasn't obvious.
Yeah, good question.
There are other questions? Yes, sir, in the back.
Phil Doobie. Since we're a farming community, are we going to restrict cannabis growers? Are we going to pick and choose what kind of farmers we have?
Ms. Pine.
I'm not sure I understand the question, but if we pass the proposal tonight, one commercial cultivation operation would be allowed.
Yes, sir.
But that's the whole point, that you're restricting who can grow marijuana. Who can be a farmer, in that sense.
Ms. Pine.
We are restricting the number of operations. The zoning that we passed in the spring restricts, puts all of the uses into two categories. One is retail sales, we allow one of those. All these others, all the other seven other uses are grouped, and the zoning that's in place says, we can approve one facility. Doesn't, we are not specifying which kind. So essentially, the first one that gets approved would be the only one that gets approved. It could be cultivation, it could be something else.
So you're down next, down front, sir.
My name's Adam Burnett, Grotudy Road. I just want to clarify one thing, that from reading the actual referendum, or whatever this is, a motion, it says that there's an aggregate of three, and I guess the aggregate should have been underlined, first of all, as an addition, but it's an aggregate of three of the three available remaining activities that can be performed. And when I understand aggregate to mean, it does not mean one of each. It means, there could be three of one of them, or two of one of them and one of another. So I want that clarification, so that everyone understands that, because that was misexplained, not explained correctly in the beginning. The second thing I want to point out is that if you're a cultivator, doesn't a cultivator have to store their product for some degree of time? And if we don't allow them to store it, I don't understand how they could function. I think most farmers have to store for at least a certain amount of time their materials. So by banning the storage, I just, I don't see how that, I think that would limit the ability for a cultivator to operate. And thirdly, what is defined as a cultivator? Is it a certain number or a certain quantity? Because my understanding is that individuals could grow a certain number, you know, and would not be considered cultivators. So, if someone could answer those questions and also clarify that it's an aggregate, so we could actually have three farmers, three farms, or two farms and one of the other, or whatever, some gag you get.
Mr. Pease.
So, I'll answer that first one, which is, that is correct. This bylaw, if passed, allows for three of any one, or two of one and one of another, or one of each. There is no restrictions on those. There is negotiations that must take place with the various boards in town in order to have those come through, of course. You asked a question about personal cultivation. That's a matter for the legal, there is a legal allowance for individuals to have plants, but I'm not a lawyer or policeman, so I don't have that number on my, top of my hands. What was the other question, sir?
The other one was about storage.
So, I'm going to guess that's contained within the marijuana, the Cannabis Commission's laws to define those. We actually polled the definitions directly from the Cannabis Commission when we wrote them here, so we're following those guidelines and not abridging them. So, I would refer you back to the Cannabis Commission guidelines on that.
But I would think that then you would be able to add storage to allow them to store as well as on site.
Again, this, this is Massachusetts. I don't know what we consider reasonable versus what gets passed down by Cannabis Control Commission, so I suspect that we should refer to that and whatever they decide, or change in the future, would apply.
Ms. Pine, did you have an answer to his question?
Yeah, I just want to, I misspoke. I apologize for confusing people with saying one of each. We approved a total of three, and we approved three categories. But it could be, all three are the same, it could be one, two, and one.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think the gentleman earlier asked about farming in Groton, marijuana farming. And I don't think that it was clarified that this zoning would prevent small, small craft cultivators, which is small farming, which is what Groton is based on. We have a history of small agriculture, and this would limit the kind of farmers that could be here in Groton. So I think that needs to be clarified. I think there was misinformation or misunderstanding at the vote as to what that means. And in the effort of a educated and knowledgeable public, I think it's important for everybody to understand that clarification.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Marsh Malanson. My question is about wording. Why have you chosen marijuana as opposed to cannabis? As, I believe cannabis is the legal and correct term.
Ms. Pine.
All those categories were created by the Cannabis Control Commission. We're just following their language.
In the back, yes, sir, Mr. Hewitt.
Yeah, Richard Hewitt. I suspect this is going to be an evolving area as time goes on, based on what's happened in other states, Washington State, Colorado, places that have had it for a while. If we want to change some of these in the future, because it may be a source of revenue for the town, what is the process, is it going to be a multi-step process to change this, or a simple town vote?
Mr. Pease.
Well, in a way, you're experiencing that process right now. There is a planning board, well, the Board of Selectmen asked if the planning board would craft a new bylaw to our specifications. They did, they held a hearing on that. And then that modification to a zoning gets brought to town meeting and requires a two-thirds change. So, I guess the accurate answer would be, it would need to go through that same process, and then in order to change it again, it would need another two-thirds majority at a future town meeting to make any alterations. Only if it reduces. Only if it bans something. So banning is required by ballot because Groton voted in the majority in the affirmative to allow it at a statewide level. That's why we must have other votes to limit it.
Mr. Burke, do you have something for the planning board?
Yes, Mr. Pease did correctly clarify that to be more restrictive, it does require the two-step process, town meeting vote and a referendum vote. I did want to clarify, the planning board did not craft this article. It was done by town council on behalf of the selectmen.
Correct, excuse me, yes. We did ask the, you did hold a hearing for us, however.
We held a public hearing as required by law.
Thank you, yes. There's illegal challenges here. This was fully sponsored by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the voters, and town council did craft this for us. Thank you for that clarification.
In the back, yes, sir.
Yes, I'm just having a little bit of trouble understanding completely what would be the precise ramifications if this, if this motion were defeated.
Ms. Pine.
If this is defeated tonight, the zoning that we passed last spring is in place and remains in place unchanged, and there would be also no referendum vote.
Mr. Pease.
To clarify, the existing zoning allows for several different opportunities within certain zones. For example, it allows for the cultivator in a industrial. We are allowing for that in, we have a planning board permit, we're allowing for that now in a general business district. It currently allows for a marijuana product manufacturer, that would be removed. It currently allows for a marijuana retailer, that would be removed. It currently allows for a testing facility, that would be maintained. It currently allows for a planning board permit for a marijuana transportation or distribution facility. It also currently allows for a research facility, that is unchanged. It also allows for other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses, including marijuana micro businesses in an industrial as well, under planning board permit. However, I still will not allow onsite consumption of marijuana at a licensed marijuana establishment.
Yes, sir, in the back.
Hi, Eric Michelson, Lowell Road. Why is everything commingled? Don't you think there's enough confusion out here in the audience where you want to have the ability to not allow places to sell marijuana or cannabis retail, but yet you also want to do, you also want to allow the harvesting and the storage? Why don't you segregate this motion instead of commingling it? I think that would eliminate a lot of the confusion. And also, I think, you know, as the town voted last year, everyone didn't want retail shops in this downtown. But apparently, the, you know, on the other side, they would allow the cultivation. So why isn't this motion, you know, just kind of spread apart? Vis a vis, you're commingling everything, and that's causing a lot of confusions, and you're getting, you know, on both sides. Just a thought.
Ms. Pine.
So, we did our best to follow the wishes of the voters as expressed in those non-binding questions. And two of those uses were given approval by the voters. So, we wrote that in to approve them.
So you're going to base that off of what the voters said, and that's fine. I understand that. But it just seems in this motion, people are still confused. You have this individual who wants to, you know, to do that.
I think, I think it's fair to say that everyone in the room, including the boards...
Is confused.
Have found this a very confusing process.
So why not silo things, you know, makes it easier, you know?
Right.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Mr.?
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm just confused right now. I'm trying to figure out which one of these, is why you understand that we can either stay with the existing rules we have or create these new rules. But it's not clear to me which ones are more restrictive and less restrictive. I keep hearing, some of them give us this, but then they take away that. Can somebody just give me a chart or something? In the existing rules, we have this, in the new rules, we have that.
Ms. Pine.
There is a chart in the handout, and...
Page 25.
Yeah, and it's also, I think, in the, it's also in the white handout tonight. Page 25 of the warrant. So, it would have been, I think you're right, it would have been better to have two separate things we could look at. But in fact, this chart on page 25 tells us both things. The things that are crossed out on page 25 are what is currently in place. They're crossed out and they're replaced with other things, and that would be the change. I can give you an overview of what my understanding of the changes is. So if we separate marijuana activities into two categories, one is retail sales, all right? We currently allow retail sales, and they're allowed only in certain places with a planning board special permit. The amendment tonight does not allow retail sales anyplace. The zoning that's in place allows one other marijuana activity in Groton, and it specifies in the chart which districts they could be in, and you would have to get a special permit, and only one of those many categories could ever be in place. The amendment that's proposed tonight says that there are three categories that we could allow in special districts with a special permit. So, I think the question of which is more restrictive is a judgment call. People see that differently.
Mr. Yanchenko.
Two-part question. First of all, in the cultivating cooperatives, they list limited liability, limited partnerships, cooperative corporations. Is that from the state statute? Okay. And then, second of all, what are we looking for fees or potential revenues being generated? We keep hearing about, this is a revenue source. Are we looking at a $5,000 license to have one facility? Or are we looking at $300,000?
Mr. Geiger, for the selectmen. Mr. Geiger.
All right, let me see if I can help here. There are eight types of marijuana businesses defined by the Cannabis Control Commission. Each one of those requires a license in order to start business. Of those, only one would produce sales tax revenue for the town. And that's retail sales. All marijuana establishments in the town who own property would pay real estate taxes. And where applicable, they would pay excise taxes on the equipment that they use. The town is allowed to apply up to a 3% hosting fee for the first five years of each marijuana establishment that is created here in town, licensed here in town. The town has to publicly lay out exactly where the additional costs came from because of the arrival of that facility. So it isn't a number that somebody can just pull out of the air and say it's 3%. You've got to justify, and it becomes a public document, exactly what those increased costs were. At the end of the five years, you could negotiate further, up to 3%. But that's essentially where the income for the town comes from. It was impossible to figure out how much a retail organization would generate in town. So I created a express, an Excel spreadsheet that started with $1 worth of revenue from retail sales and went up into the millions, not every number by itself, but in categories. And in the first year, let me also point out, if the town were to have a recreational marijuana dispensary here in town, the town would get 3% on each sale of marijuana products and materials. So if you take that 3%, and the 3% from the host, assuming we could have the full price of the host fee, you get 6% on the dollar. So each dollar in that case would bring in 6 cents of revenue. Before it reaches a number that would have significant impact on the town, many, many dollars worth... it reaches a number that would have significant impact on the town, many, many dollars worth of retail sales would have to occur when our benefit would only be 6 cents on each dollar. I hope that helps explain what the financial possibilities are around these eight types of marijuana dispensaries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the microphone in the back to my left has been taken out of service. Apparently, that was the culprit. So, Mr. Patropoulos, you move down to the front. I saw you next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. To answer the question, how did it get so complicated, a lawyer drew it up. But it isn't that complicated. It's really, if you pass this, if you don't pass this, all the marijuana-related activity can happen in our town. If you do pass this, all that can happen is research, testing, and growing. It's that simple. So leave it the way it is. Any of the permitted uses can happen. Say yes to this. All that can happen is research, testing, and growing. The idea that we're reducing farming by this is, I think, incorrect. As I understand it, we are actually increasing the opportunity for farming. I think there were limits in the current zoning law, and I think here we could have up to three farms. But the idea of farming marijuana, I think, is misunderstood. Farming marijuana is not a small activity that you're going to see on Farmer's Row. It's done in large institutional buildings that are controlled for environment so that they can grow year-round, use a lot of water, a lot of chemicals, and an extraordinary amount of security. So the idea of small farms growing craft marijuana is just not going to happen in our town. It's not economically viable. I think really the point of the vote here tonight is whether we honor the vote that was taken in the spring by a good number of people at our ballot, and that vote was largely 55% in favor of what's here tonight and 45% opposed. We have an unusually high bar, a 2/3s bar here. 55 to 44 would not clear that bar, but in my view, we are here today. We should be respectful of what our citizens told us at the polls and approve this. As we've heard, if we need to, we can always go backwards. Lastly, the idea of us having lots of money as a result of this has been thrown around, and as Mr. Geiger has said, it's been very hard and very uncertain as to what you could actually achieve here. And I don't believe for a second that the dollar amount here is significant enough to make it worth the decision. I think other issues are the things that we should be making our decisions about. For instance, what is the character of our town and how would we like to shape it? Thanks.
In the back, yes, sir.
I move the question.
There's been a motion to move the question. Is there a second? A motion to move the question suppresses debate. If you vote to move the question, we'll move immediately to voting on the main motion. If you vote against moving the question, debate will continue. A motion to move the question requires a 2/3s majority. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The ayes have it. The motion to move the question passes by unanimous vote. We now go to the main motion under Article III. As it is a zoning article, it requires a 2/3s majority. All those in favor of the main motion under Article III signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
No.
The chair will ask for six volunteer tellers, and we'll do a hand count. Voters should have their voter card. The chair needs three additional volunteers, please. It doesn't hurt, I promise. And if you are a teller, you do also get to vote. Keep your card, sir, if you're going to be a teller. We need one more, please. Ladies and gentlemen, quiet, please. Quiet, please. Ladies and gentlemen, are there any voters who were issued a pink voter card? The reason is, some voters voted to register in time for the special town meeting, but not the annual town meeting. So if they were here tonight, we'll need to make sure that they're counted for the special town meeting. Now, when I call for the vote of yes, those who are voting for yes should raise their green card and keep it raised until the checkers have come by and counted your vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article III signify by raising your green card. Ladies and gentlemen, all of those opposed to the main motion under Article III signify by raising your card and keeping it raised until you have been counted. Yes, sir.
All right, let me see if I can help here. There are eight types of marijuana businesses defined by the Cannabis Control Commission. Each one of those requires a license in order to start business. Of those, only one would produce sales tax revenue for the town, and that's retail sales. All marijuana establishments in the town who own property would pay real estate taxes, and where applicable, they would pay excise taxes on the equipment that they use. The town is allowed to apply up to a 3% hosting fee for the first five years of each marijuana establishment that is created here in town, licensed here in town. The town has to publicly lay out exactly where the additional costs came from because of the arrival of that facility. So it isn't a number that somebody can just pull out of the air and say it's 3%. You've got to justify, and it becomes a public document, exactly what those increased costs were. At the end of the five years, you could negotiate further, up to 3%. But that's essentially where the income for the town comes from. It was impossible to figure out how much a retail organization would generate in town. So I created an Excel spreadsheet that started with $1 worth of revenue from retail sales and went up into the millions, not every number by itself, but in categories. And in the first year, let me also point out, if the town were to have a recreational marijuana dispensary here in town, the town would get 3% on each sale of marijuana products and materials. So if you take that 3% and the 3% from the host -- assuming we could have the full price of the host fee, you get 6% on the dollar. So each dollar in that case would bring in 6 cents of revenue. Before it reaches a number that would have significant impact on the town, many, many dollars worth of retail sales would have to occur when our benefit would only be 6 cents on each dollar. I hope that helps explain what the financial possibilities are around these eight types of marijuana dispensaries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the microphone in the back to my left has been taken out of service. Apparently, that was the culprit. So, Mr. Patropoulos, you move down to the front. I saw you next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. To answer the question, how did it get so complicated, a lawyer drew it up. But it isn't that complicated. It's really, if you pass this, if you don't pass this, all the marijuana-related activity can happen in our town. If you do pass this, all that can happen is research, testing, and growing. It's that simple. So leave it the way it is. Any of the permitted uses can happen. Say yes to this. All that can happen is research, testing, and growing. The idea that we're reducing farming by this is, I think, incorrect. As I understand it, we are actually increasing the opportunity for farming. I think there were limits in the current zoning law, and I think here we could have up to three farms. But the idea of farming marijuana, I think, is misunderstood. Farming marijuana is not a small activity that you're going to see on Farmer's Row. It's done in large institutional buildings that are controlled for environment so that they can grow year-round, use a lot of water, a lot of chemicals, and an extraordinary amount of security. So the idea of small farms growing craft marijuana is just not going to happen in our town. It's not economically viable. I think really the point of the vote here tonight is whether we honor the vote that was taken in the spring by a good number of people at our ballot, and that vote was largely 55% in favor of what's here tonight and 45% opposed. We have an unusually high bar, a 2/3s bar here. 55 to 44 would not clear that bar, but in my view, we are here today. We should be respectful of what our citizens told us at the polls and approve this. As we've heard, if we need to, we can always go backwards. Lastly, the idea of us having lots of money as a result of this has been thrown around, and as Mr. Geiger has said, it's been very hard and very uncertain as to what you could actually achieve here. And I don't believe for a second that the dollar amount here is significant enough to make it worth the decision. I think other issues are the things that we should be making our decisions about. For instance, what is the character of our town and how would we like to shape it? Thanks.
In the back, yes, sir.
I move the question.
There's been a motion to move the question. Is there a second? A motion to move the question suppresses debate. If you vote to move the question, we'll move immediately to voting on the main motion. If you vote against moving the question, debate will continue. A motion to move the question requires a 2/3s majority. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye. Those opposed.
No.
The chair will ask for six volunteer tellers, and we'll do a hand count. Next slide, please. So our request is for $66,000 to develop an integrated solution and support the bidding process. What that would include is to open the roof areas from below to confirm the configurations and the conditions. And if you look at the report, the 48-page report, some of the construction process was not up to what it should have been. It will also investigate a leak that comes in from the foundation into the children's room. The $66,000 will also design drawings and specifications for the new roof system, flashings and gutters, as well as any masonry and window repairs that may be necessary. The $66,000 will also develop a bid package, and they will support us in the bidding process to find a contractor to repair the roof. Next slide, please. So what we're asking for will, the $66,000, this engineering study will provide a comprehensive plan to address the faulty construction of the 1999 addition. And again, like the tile manufacturer, the contractor who did our addition is out of business as well, so there's no recourse back to them. It will also address the normal aging of an 1893 roof system. It will address, as I mentioned, the failure of the synthetic slates. If you remember, I talked about that sunken garden. That's where all the HVAC equipment is. That's a flat roof with a rubberized surface on there, and the life expectancy of a commercial roof is anywhere from 15 to 20 years. So we're going to need to replace that anyway, as there are some issues with that starting to appear. This would address the undersized gutter issue. It would also address the major issue, which is that those valleys between the new and the old building, and try to engineer a better solution to that. It would also just deal with the fact that our weather, as we know, is getting -- storms are getting more intense, so we're getting larger and larger snowfalls, and it will stop-- the old building, and try to engineer a better solution to that. And it would also just deal with the fact that our weather, as we know, is getting, storms are getting more intense, so we're getting larger and larger snowfalls, and it will stop water infiltration higher up on the roof. Next slide. So we're asking for your support. As we said, the entire forty-eight-page report is available at the library, or it's available on our website, gpl.org. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments on Article Eight? Would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article Eight passes by a majority vote.
I move the sum of thirty thousand dollars be hereby appropriated to be expended by the Town Manager for the purpose of providing funding to maintain and operate the Prescott School in future fiscal years. Said funds to be used to supplement any rental income received from tenants of the building, and further to authorize the Select Board to lease all or any portions of the property located at forty-five Main Street in Groton.
One forty-five Main Street.
I'm sorry, one forty-five Main Street in Groton, and known as the Prescott School, for a term not to exceed six years, and to enter into agreements for the operation and use of such property for any public, commercial, or municipal purposes, for such consideration and on such terms and conditions as the Planning Board deems advisable.
Says Select Board, sir.
I'm sorry, the Select Board deems advisable. And to meet this appropriation, thirty thousand dollars be hereby transferred from the excess and deficiency fund, free cash.
Article Nine has been moved and seconded. Mr. Geiger.
On August twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, the Select Board entered into a three-year lease with the Friends of Prescott Incorporated for the Prescott School property and building. While the terms of the lease require the Friends of Prescott to be responsible for most operational costs, the Town of Groton remains responsible for insurance, the same coverage provided for all other town-owned buildings, year-round landscaping tasks and chores, and snow removal. The estimated annual cost of the Town's three-year obligation under this lease is approximately twenty thousand dollars a year. The thirty thousand dollars requested in this article, when combined with the thirty-two thousand dollars appropriated at last spring's Town Meeting for this purpose, will provide the funds necessary for the Town to fulfill its three-year obligation as described in the lease.
Are there questions or comments under Article Nine? Yes, sir, in the back.
Yes, Rodney Hirsch, speaking as an individual. It sounds like this could be considered a loan from the Town to the School Board to rent out, lease out portions of the building. Is there any intent for the School Board to pay back the loan to the Town?
Mr. Pease.
The School Board has vacated the premises and is no longer a tenant of that building.
But the language says for the Select Board to lease portions out, so the Select Board can ask for the rent and include a payback to the taxpayers from the rent.
I'm not sure I understand that question.
If you lease something, you get rent for income.
Right, and within that agreement, you're absolutely right, and within that agreement specifies that what we will take care of, and that...
So this is an added expense to the taxpayer to enable you to rent out with no net return to the taxpayer?
I'm going to say that I don't necessarily call it an added expense, because these are monies that we would pay to maintain that building regardless of its tenancy, but they are expenses that we will have to pay, and the idea is to monitor these as the tenant ramps up its business.
And the leases would be valued to have it even, come out even for the taxpayer?
We have one lease. The tenant may have other leases with its leaseholders, subleases.
Right. Mr. Robertson on the FinCom.
Yeah, just to clarify this lease. This lease is three years. It says six, but it's actually the first part is three years. And to get to your point, Rodney, the way it works is that the twenty thousand per year is what we are spending. The Friends of Prescott is going to pick up the rest of the cost. If the Friends of Prescott in the first two years makes money, which is a nonprofit, that's kind of interesting, but you do make money, that would be shared with us fifty percent over what they make, because in the end, they have to make money. We're not going to be supporting this building at twenty thousand dollars a year forever. That's not the intent. The intent is that they will be self-sufficient, they will pay the rent to the Town, it'll cover the Town's costs. In addition to that, if there's another three-year lease, it'll also fund capital improvements we're going to need on that building. So this first-year lease is to get them off the ground where the Town is willing to pay twenty thousand a year for what we're going to be funding, and that they will pick up the rest of the cost. If, in fact, they become profitable, they will give half the profits to us, and by the third year, they have to pay the twenty thousand dollars. So this isn't funded for every year by the Town. It's a way to get them off the ground, to help them, that was what the Town had said they would like, and this will stop hopefully by year three. If not, then the Town will have to make a different kind of decision. But this is not a for-revered, the Town is going to cost the Town twenty thousand dollars.
Are there other questions or comments under Article Nine? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article Nine passes by a majority vote. Article Ten, Mr. DeMeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the boundary of Groton Center Sewer District is established by the vote of the Special Town Meeting of February sixth, nineteen eighty-nine, under Article Seven, and is shown most recently on the plan approved under Article Fourteen of the Annual Town Meeting of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and five, be hereby extended to include the property shown on Assessor's Lot Two Thirty-five dash one, Two Twenty-seven Boston Road, and its successors or assigns, and provided that all costs of designing, laying, and construction of the extension and any associated connection, and the cost of additional capacity, and the property owner's proportionate share of the general benefit facilities, and any, pardon me, and all other costs associated therewith are paid by the owner of the property benefited thereby, whether by the assessment of betterments or otherwise.
Article Ten has been moved and seconded. I believe we have a presentation from Mr. Kevin Lindemere.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. DeMeyer. We can go to the next slide. The article speaks for itself. What we are here is to ask for your yes vote on Article Ten. We want to extend the Center Sewer District from Johnson's, right across the street from Johnson's Restaurant, across our property, which is adjacent to the golf course. So if you go to the next slide, this is where we are. The Katy Pond is to the left on the golf course, to the right is Ames Road, so we have a seventeen-acre parcel there. If you go to the next slide, many of you may recognize our property as seen from One Nineteen, and it's a landmark here in Groton. We are very proud to own this property and to maintain it. So if you go to the next slide, I want to do a couple of things. First, give you a little bit of a brief history, because the history of this property and the way it looks and everything plays very well into what we want to do. And second, I want to give you a little bit of background on what we plan to do to give you, so you're better informed when it comes time to vote for Article Ten. So the first thing is, this house is one of the oldest houses in Groton. It was built around circa sixteen eighty by one of the original settlers in Groton, and he was also one of the first selectmen, Deacon Joshua Whitney. The house has been a true garrison house at one point in the very early seventeen hundreds. There were a number of soldiers housed in this house during the Indian Wars. I will add that since we moved into that house twenty-two years ago, I've discovered that I'm a descendant of Joshua Whitney's brother, so I have a special affection for this place and how it continues. The barn underwent significant repairs right after we bought it. It was in desperate need of repair. We did significant landscaping and drainage around it, because the water coming off the hill was damaging it. The barn is a hundred feet long, it's three levels high, it's thirty-nine feet, thirty-eight feet wide, and it's about a hundred and seventy-five years old. Nobody really knows for sure, but it's an old post-and-beam structure, and if you've been in it, you know that it's a very grand facility. It's been used for storage and agriculture in the past. What we have discovered is agriculture is just not a sustainable activity for this structure. The future of the barn, its long-term future, may very well be dependent on being able to generate some commercial revenue stream. So next slide, what do we want to do? We want to maintain the property, its history, its character, its view shed or appearance. We want to maintain to the greatest extent possible the aesthetics of this place that you see it from the road. We want to build a new house, if you're facing it to the left and up behind the trees on the edge of the property, for our own personal residence. We want to convert the barn to a seasonal functional hall, like for weddings and other gatherings like that. The existing house would then be rented to, as, for people who are using the function hall, or an Airbnb, or a bed and breakfast, we haven't decided. We'll decide which best business model that we want to use as we go through the process with Planning Board and others as we go forward. We recognize that there are many steps that we have to go through. We chose to start with expanding the Center Sewer District, because it is one of the biggest single-point of failures in the whole process for us, that we may not be able to do what we'd like to do with the barn and other things without having the Center Sewer District extended, or at least if we could, it would be a great expense. So you go to the next slide, we actually did have a wedding reception in here, this is an idea of what it looks like. If you go on to the next slide, what will a function hall bring to Groton? Well, this is an added business. It will bring business for existing enterprises here in town, such as restaurants, hotels, caterers, bakers, et cetera. Our new business would be compatible with Groton as a destination, and with other businesses in town and recently-approved projects, such as Indian Hill and the Colonial, the New Groton Inn. We see what we're doing as being, we're actually encouraged by these things, that after a couple of fault starts in the past, that this may be a good time to be able to start it. What will it bring to the Town itself? Additional tax revenue with minimal need for additional Town services and expenditures. Increased real estate tax from a revaluation of the barn, the purpose of it and the structure, and what investments we put into it. Potential meals tax, if catering is originated here from Groton, and we will certainly promote that. Potential room tax, if we have four rooms or more. We have a four-bedroom home, it's our intention that we would try to rent four rooms out, which would generate a room tax. It would even actually benefit the Town sewer system, which is why we're here tonight. So if you go to the next slide, working with the sewer commissioners, who have spent a great deal of time with us working through this, we discovered that the flow of sewage, and I'm sorry, this is going to be a little bit of the graphic part of it, so this is the PG thirteen of our presentation, it's highly seasonal. And you can see that off the Center Sewer District, you range from about a hundred and forty thousand gallons a day in the winter season, down to about less than a hundred thousand gallons a day during the summer season. And so it turns out that our project, what we want to do, actually adds volume to the sewer system during the off-season. So if you go to the next slide, here's what our expectation looks like. We would add about three thousand gallons a day during the off-season. This increases utilization when the sewage system is running at a low rate, it helps the operation. If everything worked out at the maximum possible usage on any given day during the summertime, using assumptions we've agreed to with the sewer commissioners, our project would generate about three thousand gallons a day at maximum. Now, we don't think we'll ever really see maximum from our business case, we sure hope we do. If you go to the next slide, we know that there has been some concern that if we extend the sewer district to our property, that there could be intensive development on our property. We believe that this is, these concerns are unfounded. I'll tell you why. There is room for one additional lot on the property, even though it's seventeen acres, and we plan to build a house for our own use on that property. If you go to the next slide, this is a wetlands map, and I'll explain it a little bit. This has been filed, this was from a two thousand eight wetland survey, and I mentioned we had a couple of fault starts, and we recognize that we'll probably have to have this redone. The blue line in the center, that's the wetland boundary. The red line is the fifty-foot buffer, which I believe the Conservation Commission considers to be no-touch. The green line is the hundred-foot buffer, for which we could build something outside of that buffer. The existing house is between the fifty and the hundred-foot buffer. The barn is between the fifty and hundred-foot buffer. The only place we could actually build our house is up and to the right in the, on the side of that hill, where the hill, the gradient is less. There is a small piece down in the corner between One Nineteen and Ames Road, but when you take into account the fifty-foot setbacks, that little green wedge there shrinks down to about the size of an average car. So there's no room to build anything down there as well. So from our property, it's all wetland, or buffers, fifty-foot buffer zone, with a very small amount of property available that we plan to use for a house for ourselves. If you go to the next slide, what we're asking for is your support on this article. We have met the concerns about sewage capacity. We believe the wetlands and the buffer zones and all the requirements prohibit any significant or any intensive development that would occur. In fact, it only probably allows just for our one house. Our plan will not, it will not add to Groton's tax burden, in fact, it will improve revenues to the Town. It will have minimal impact on additional Town services. Unless somebody knows something that I don't know, we don't plan on adding any kids on this property for a long, long time. It will benefit the sewer system. And except for a couple of minor details, Article Ten and Twelve are relatively the same. So if you go to the next slide, I'd like to thank you all for your kind attention. I hope you will support us, and this is the beginning of a process that we're going to be, if we pass tonight, we are going to start as quickly as we can to go to planning and zoning and all of the other committees that we need to touch and talk to in order to make this dream real. So thank you very much.
With a presentation in opposition, Ms. Menugian.
So you've heard from the applicant, and what you've heard is an intent, you've seen a sketch. I disagree very vehemently that this article and Article Twelve are similar. Article Twelve is a fully permitted, shovel-ready, engineered, surveyed design. This is a sketch, it's an idea, it's an intent. Next slide, please. The Town of Groton has a permitting guide, and you can read on the screen what the intent of the permitting guide is, and then you'll see that the land use director is the sole contact and the guide through this permitting process. This project has not been through any steps in this permitting process. Next slide. So typically, an applicant would reach out to the land use director, have several meetings with town departments to make sure everyone is on the same page in terms of information, to give the applicant feedback, suggestions, and highlight potential concerns. At the end of that process, the land use director will let the applicant know what boards they... boards they need to be before, what permits they're likely to need, what potential roadblocks they will find. So the four main boards that are typically part of this process are the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the board of health, and the conservation commission. All four of these boards have very rigorous requirements. They require that all abutters be notified by certified mail of the project and the meetings regarding the project, and the public hearings that they all hold must be advertised for two weeks prior to the public meeting. These public hearings are our collective opportunity to learn about the project, the intent, any concerns, any impacts. That's our opportunity. At this point, there have been no public hearings because this project hasn't been through any of the process. They're starting at the back end of what is the typical process. Once a project has been through all of the boards and all the permits are in place, the plans and intent have been tweaked and changed as they go, it's then appropriate to come forward to town meeting and request a zoning change if need be or a sewer extension. Next slide. It's important to recognize that the sewer extension we are being asked for here tonight does not go with the project. It does not go with the applicant. It remains with the parcel. So we are being asked tonight to extend sewer capacity to a 17-acre residential parcel with no firm final engineered design. The permitting process hasn't unfolded, and of concern to me in particular, if you could go to the next slide, please, Don. This shows the project site. It's 17 acres of RA-zoned area, and it is adjacent to several other very large parcels. The Country Club is adjacent to this at 62 acres. The parcel, parcel to the rear is 80 acres. All of these or any of these, if combined with this project site in part or in whole, i.e. if someone sells one or the other parcel to another owner, all of that entire parcel would have the sewer rights that are being requested here tonight. So while I have no tremendous issue or concern with the project that's been presented, at this point, we have basically a napkin sketch and an intent. The project will change as it goes through the boards. The intent will change, and if we extend this sewer capacity and infrastructure here tonight, there's the potential that we could be opening up to 100 acres of residential development. Thank you.
Gominer, did you have a committee report?
Yes, the sewer commission, after several meetings with the applicant, has determined that there's sufficient capacity for what's being proposed.
And Mr. Lindemere?
I'd like to ask the board of selectmen how you came out on your position for, toward this article. I recall that there were a number of positions that were changed at the last board of selecting meeting.
Ms. Pine.
Yeah, we're just consulting about this because the way it's printed in the warrant is not the way that it turned out. I can only speak for myself. I am in favor of this and said so at the meeting. Town manager informs me that Josh Deacon also was in favor of it, and John?
The board is four to one.
All right. So, the board, I'm informed, the board was four members. That would be all four of us other than Allison, who just spoke, who are in favor of this.
Now open the floor to debate. Yes, sir, down front.
So there was a reference to the land use director as being the sort of arbiter of this process, and I wonder if the land use director can tell us whether or not there's some violation of the process here?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The process is laid out, our guidelines. The, an applicant can come forward at any time with an application. They don't have to go through that process, but the guidelines are recommendations for making that process go smoother.
Mr. Trump.
So a couple of things I want to mention. The idea that, you know, we're presented with this 17-acre residential parcel, and there's the risk that it could be entirely developed. I think anyone who's driven by knows that that is largely a wetland, and Mr. Lindemere, either you believe him that he has very limited amounts of not wetland to develop, or you don't believe him, but I see no reason not to believe him. There's a, there's a question of why was the Concom not approached? The planning board, the zoning board of appeal approached? Well, it seems like this article is about extending a sewer system, and the only entities that are involved in extending a sewer system are the sewer commission and town meeting. The planning board doesn't rule on a sewer extension. The Concom doesn't rule on a sewer extension. The sewer commission does, and we do. Recently, great consideration was given to a local nonprofit here in our town so that they could have a project that would, in theory, bring extraordinary economic development to our town. This is exactly, I mean, if this isn't the kind of economic development that those considerations were intended to support, I don't know what is. And lastly, we just extended sewer to Four Corners, coming from Air. In doing that, we ran all the way up Sandy Pond Road. If we're concerned about enormous residential development, the people who proposed and advanced the sewer extension to Four Corners should have thought about the residential development that could come from the land currently owned by New England Electric along Sandy Pond Road. That was never a consideration there, and I don't believe it's really a consideration here. Getting residential development to those back four, back acres would be so much harder than putting residential development onto Sandy Pond Road. I think this is a wonderful project, and I think we should support it.
Down front, yes, ma'am. Ms. Allen.
Jane Allen, Chedex Street. I wanted to ask Mr. Lindemere a couple of questions. Do you see yourself coming back to the town meeting and asking for a vote, a zoning change? For this property?
If a zoning change is required, absolutely. There's some question, and we've talked to Bob Collins and others, and we have, by the way, spoken to a lot of people about this process. We haven't had any formal hearings, only with sewer commission. But if a town, if coming back for a zoning change is required, absolutely, we will do that. We plan on going through the entire process as described, as Ms. Menugian described, so...
Well, let me say, you probably could get away with a home business if you had less than three full-time employees. Do you see yourself as having more than three full-time employees?
Probably not. What the, what we have envisioned, we don't want to have, we don't see a lot of full-time employees for this. It will be left very much to the people who are going to be, would be renting the building or living in the, in the, in the house or using the house.
And my final part of it is, are you thinking of extending the sewer before you get the rest of the permits for the rest of your, all the rest of the...
No, absolutely not. We've had a few fault starts in the past. We've spent quite a bit of money trying to get here. This is not a napkin sketch as it was described. The map I showed you is a real wetlands delineation map. I just happened to draw on it to highlight where the boundaries are. We've had it surveyed. We've had the lot laid out. So this, this, we would not spend the money on this unless we have all of the permissions necessary to be able to move this forward. And I want to reemphasize, we don't want to change the character of this property. We love this property, and I know a lot of people do. So the, our intention here is to preserve it and to generate a revenue stream that will allow us to do that. This is the single point of failure in the process as far as we're concerned. If we can have sewer capacity, we probably can't do much of anything. So we didn't want to spend a lot of time on stuff. We didn't want to go through a lot of hearings only to find out when we got to the very end of it, oops, you can't do that. So I hope that answers your question.
Can I ask town council? If we extend him permission to do this for his land, does that transfer to anybody else who owns this land at a subsequent date? Yes, okay, thank you.
In the back, yes, Ms. Elliott.
Ms. Ellen, may I ask?
Oh, amen.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see. I'll get to you in a moment, Ms. Ellen. Ms. Elliott.
I move that we postpone this article indefinitely.
A motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone the main motion under Article 10. Yes, Ms. Elliott.
I support the vision for a function barn. It is how that, how some of these ancient structures can bring new life. However, with this article, there is no mechanism to develop what needs to be developed and to save what can be saved. Extending the sewer runs with the land. This article does not hold the developer to their promise. There is no mechanism to hold a development to what has been orally proposed. It saves nothing. Is this where the town wants to see high-impact development that sewer allows? Let the developer work with the land use department to give the public the opportunity to ask such questions such as, can a function hall be in an RA district? Is, is this land under 61A? Does there are change of use, kick in other zoning requirements? There was no written notice to any abutters. Town meeting is not the place for site plan review. There is a process in place. Give some time to let the developer work with that process to allow development where it's wanted and to save the view and the agricultural setting. Thank you.
Chair, as I missed, I should have explained that a motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debate. So debate will continue. It's just when we do go to vote, we'll, we'll vote on whether we should indefinitely postpone or vote on the main motion as it was made. I saw Mr. Yanchenko.
Thank you. From a technical point of view, how large is the pipes that are going to be extended so that when we talked about, as Ms. Menugian brought up, potentially 100 homes being, is this the end of the line? Because I'm actually one of your abutters, you know? So the question is, if we do extend it, can we only put his functions on and maybe pick up Johnson's or something? Or is it going to have enough capacity to pick up 1,000 more homes? I mean, I know there's also a limit on how much the plant can take as well. If you could please clarify that.
Mr. Gominer.
I can try. Johnson's is already on the sewer. The sewer line ends at Johnson's. If you look, there's a little vent pipe next to the Country Club property. At that point, I'm not sure. I think we have a two-and-a-half-inch low-pressure line there. I don't think we could take hundreds of houses, but I'm not entirely sure of what the flow limitation would be. I'd need an engineer to, to tell me that the, the end of the line's at Johnson's right now, and it would be at his property would be the end of the line. Yeah, Four Corners is completely separate.
Chair, I want to give Mr. Lindemere a chance to respond to some of the comments that have been made.
Yes, I think there might be some confusion about allowing development on adjacent property. As talking to Mr. Gominer earlier today, the sewer extension, as we currently have it envisioned, is not going to border Highway 119. It is going to go past a small corner of the golf course, and then with directional drilling, immediately enter our property and go diagonally across to the three structures. So if anybody wanted to tap into this, it's not going to be in a public right-of-way. It is going to be entirely on our property. So in a butter, as far as I know from talking to Mr. Gominer, development off of that sewer system would be very similar to somebody wanting to tap into the sewer line going to your house in order to develop something behind you. So Jim, is that, did I hear that correctly?
Mr. Gominer from the sewer commission.
Yes, you heard that correctly.
Okay. In the back, Ms. Ellen has the wireless microphone. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ellen, Main Street. I move the question.
A motion has been made to move the question. Does that apply to both the motion to indefinitely postpone and the main motion?
Yes. Yes.
Is there a second? A motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely pu, or, I'm sorry, to move the questions. It suppresses all debate, requires a two-thirds majority. If you vote to move the questions, we'll move directly to voting. If you vote against moving the question, debate will continue. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Two-thirds majority is achieved to move the questions. Do seven voters wish to challenge a ruling of the chair? Seeing none, do you now have for you a motion to indefinitely postpone the main motion under Article 10? If you move to, if you vote to indefinitely postpone the main motion under Article 10, we will move directly to Article 11. If you vote against the motion to indefinitely postpone, we will then vote yes or no on the main motion under Article 10. Is that clear? On the motion to indefinitely postpone, Article 10 requires a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion to indefinitely postpone fails by a majority vote. On the main motion under Article 10, it too requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The chair will hear it again. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 10?
Aye.
Those opposed? I would like to ask you, when I call yes, the ayes and nays, to raise your green card, and I'll see if I can ascertain the correct outcome visually. If not, we'll have to come. Everybody has their green card. All those in favor, raise your green card. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your green card. Chair believes the ayes have it. Are there seven voters who wish to challenge a ruling of the chair? If not, Article 10 passes by a majority vote. Article 11, Ms. Menugian.
I move that the code of the town of Groton be hereby amended by deleting Article 3 of Chapter 190 in its entirety and inserting in its place a new Article 3 as set forth in the warrant for the 2018 Fall Town Meeting.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Menugian.
So this would put in place the rules that the new sewer district will be governed by. This is only for the Four Corners Sewer District. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions under Article 11? Requires a majority vote, questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Article 11 passes by a majority vote. Article 12, Ms. Menugian.
I move that the boundaries of the Four Corners Sewer District, as established by the vote under Article 12 of the 2015 Spring Town Meeting, be extended to include the properties shown on Groton Assessor's maps as Lot 120-2.16 and 120-2.40 on the plan entitled Four Corners Village Sewer District, provided that all costs of designing, laying, and construction of the connection and any general benefits facility charge are paid by the owner of the property benefited thereby.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Menugian.
So this expands the sewer district to include the shovel-ready permitted residential parcels that are outlined there. It doesn't, incorporating them into the sewer district does not change the development or the density in any way.
Are there any questions or comments under Article 12? In the back, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, what's described doesn't mean anything to me. Can you explain where these parcels are, not just what they're called?
Do we have a map?
It's on page eight in your handout in the informational packet. It's on page eight in your handout in the informational packet.
The two parcels that are being included in this article are the two outlined in red, not the ones highlighted in red, but the ones outlined in red that say residential. They are the same parcels regardless of whether the map is upside down or right-side up.
Are there other questions or comments under Article 12? Yes, sir.
Hi, Steve Stark. Why those two and not the other ones in that, in this neighborhood? Are all those connected?
Those are the two that have requested to be included.
Are there other comments or questions? Requires a majority vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 12 passes by a majority vote. Article 13, Mr. Pease.
I move that Chapter 13 Finance Committee of the Code of the Town of Groton be amended by deleting Chapter 13 in its entirety and in its place adding a new Chapter 13, quote, "Finance Committee," unquote, as set forth in the warrant for the 2018 Fall Town Meeting.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Pease.
So, as we will know, in fall of 2016, we approved a new charter. In that charter is a well-thought-out and extremely more relevant Finance Committee layout. We are trying to make sure that the charter and the town bylaws match and are in sync so that people like me, when we first try to join the FinCom, don't try to look in two different places and get two different answers as to what the FinCom does.
Are there questions or comments under Article 13? Requires a majority vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 13 passes by unanimous vote. Article 14, Ms. Pine.
I move that the town bylaws, with the exceptions of Chapter 13 Finance Committee and Chapter 20, uh, I'm sorry, Chapter 218 zoning, be hereby amended by changing the words Board of Selectmen wherever they appear to the words Select Board and making such other clerical revisions as are required to change all references to the Board of Selectmen and its members to Select Board and Select Board Members.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Pine.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the summary in the warrant states, the board voted unanimously last February to change our name to the Select Board. We then voted on an article at the Spring Town Meeting to change the language in the town charter. This article tonight is to change the language in our bylaws to match what is in the charter, similar to the last motion that we just passed. I want to mention one thing because there was a mention in the newspaper, some of you may have seen, that Selectman Josh Deegan had commented that he felt we shall be free to choose how we refer to ourselves, and he still wants to be referred to as a select man. This article tonight refers only to our printed bylaws. It has no effect on how we wish to refer to ourselves in conversation. And Josh, I spoke, he can't be here tonight, I spoke with him today, and he is in favor of this. This article tonight is just a housekeeping article to update the town's bylaws to reflect changes that have already been made in the charter. The reason the finance section is exempted is because we already just did that, and the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds majority instead of a regular majority, so we'll do that in the next article.
Are there questions under Article 14? Questions or comments? Requires a majority vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Chair will hear it again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 14 passes by a majority vote. Article 15, Ms. Pine.
I move that Chapter 218 zoning be hereby amended by changing the words Board of Selectmen wherever they appear to the words Select Board and making such other clerical revisions as are required to change all references to the Board of Selectmen and its members to Select Board and Select Board Members.
Article 15 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Pine. Anything further?
It's the same thing. It's in another housekeeping article. We don't want to leave ourselves open to any kind of confusion or misinterpretation by having different wording in different places in our governing documents.
The report of the Planning Board, Gus Widmeyer? Is that correct?
No, Carolyn Perkins.
Carol Perkins, I'm sorry. I didn't see you standing there.
That's all right.
I was told Gus was doing it. Thank you.
At a meeting of the September 13, 2018, the Planning Board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed zoning amendment to reflect the change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Are there questions or comments under Article 15? Because it's a change to zoning, it requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. A two-thirds majority is achieved. Article 15 passes by a two-thirds majority. Article 15, right? Thank you. Article 16, Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Chapter 125 Demolition Delay of the Code of the Town of Groton be amended by deleting Sections 125-3 (par. G), 125-3 (par. H), and 125-4 (par. A) in their entirety and inserting in their place new Sections 125-3 (G), 125-3 (H), and 125-4 (A) as set forth in the warrant for the 2018 Fall Town Meeting.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded, Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. My name is Bob DeGroot, and I'm the chairman of the Groton Historical Commission. The Groton Historical Commission, as you may know, seeks to identify, document, and as appropriate, preserve the historic assets in the town of Groton. The Demolition Delay Bylaw is a historic preservation tool, nothing more. Its purpose is to provide a process for the documentation and potentially preservation of historically significant structures here in the town which exist outside of the historic district where demolition has been proposed. The intent of the bylaw is not to prevent demolition, but rather to provide an opportunity to determine what, if any, preservation solutions may exist for a historically significant structure where demolition has been proposed. If no preservation solutions are identified within an agreed-upon time, the demolition permit is approved. Many towns in the Commonwealth have similar demolition delay bylaws. In Eastern Mass, Historical Commission recently found that the average delay period for towns with those bylaws ranged between 12 and 18 months. Reading's delay period is 24 months. So from a best practices perspective, the Historic Commission is concerned that the Groton's delay period is at least six months too short. In the last 10 years, Historical Commission has used the demolition delay process once. What we found is that six months did not provide for the needed due diligence, especially for a committee with no funding. We can't hire consultants to research and/or document these structures. Members of HisCom need to do the work, which takes time. As our committee looks to the future, we're concerned about the possibility that significant historical structures may face demolition. To ensure that our town is properly prepared to thoroughly evaluate such situations, we are making this request tonight. I assure you, this is not an attempt by the Historical Commission to limit property owner rights in any way. We're simply requesting additional time to perform the needed due diligence that is required for the unique charac, or for those unique circumstances where historically significant structures face demolition. Historical Commission has and will continue to treat each demolition application on an individual basis, working with the property owner to properly understand each situation in order to reach a mutually beneficial outcome. If Historical Commission doesn't need the full 18-month delay that's proposed here this evening to address a demolition request, we will not use the full 18 months. Of note, approximately 95% of the demolition permit applications for structures have little to no historic value. These structures might be old, but that doesn't mean they're historic. Often, the structures that do have historic value have significant structural issues. In these cases, Historical Commission makes an appointment to photograph and, if possible, measure the structure, then we approve the permit application. Of the handful of structures over the last 10 years which had historical significance and were sound, I think there were five in total, four were determined to not have enough significance to invoke demolition delay in Historic Commission's view. So we photographed and, in some cases, measured the structures and approved the demolition permits. The Historical Commission is continuing to investigate the funding options that may be available to us to support the preservation of our historic structures. Until we find those financial resources, our only other option is to request the additional time our committee will need when these situations arise. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. The Historical Commission would very much appreciate your support on this article. Thank you again.
Ms. Menugian has been asked to be recognized as a principal opponent. Ms. Menugian.
So once again, I'm, I'm standing on my own here on the Select Board. I understand the intent of this. I think that a jump from our current six-month delay to 18 months is, is too big a jump. Basically, this new request would mean any structure built previous, prior to 1943, the demolition thereof could be delayed for up to 18 months while this committee decides whether the demolition is permissible or not. And I think that that's, that's too long for homeowners to wait in limbo while this board is making decisions. I think, too, that if it's only been enacted or, or only one property has been held up in the, in the past 10 years for this, that the vast majority of properties that have requested demolition have not been of historical significant nature that were deemed worth fighting for. And I would just hate to see unlimited numbers potentially of demolition requests held up needlessly.
Open the floor to Ms. Menugian.
The town manager just let me know that Mr. Deegan also opposes this at the 18-month time limit.
Ms. Ellen.
I am also opposed to this mostly because, and it's not that I don't love the old houses, because I certainly do. But before 1903, isn't necessarily what we would normally consider an old house, although many people would. I do think that it is unfair to the buyer, and I think it's unfair to the seller. If I found a piece of property where I thought the house needed to be taken down, as a seller, I couldn't sell it to these people until we went through this board. An 18-month seems a very long time for me to wait. And the way it's written is I have to keep the house on the market and looking for somebody who's not going to tear it down, which puts the buyer in a position, an untenable position, because they can either wait the 18 months and hope that nobody comes by at the last minute to get this house that they love, or they'll just go and find another house. I just think, I absolutely believe with the intent, but I think the regulation is very undoable. Thank you.
In the back, yes, sir.
Larry Hurley, Lost Lake Drive. For the past 40 years, I've been in the demolition business. I believe that I tore down the only house that was questionable in Groton that they could not move with the six-month demolition delay bylaw. I've encountered this bylaw in a lot of other communities and have yet to have one of these buildings saved because of the bylaw. I think that it is exorbitant to go to 18 months. I think that if there is a historically significant building that should be saved, it will be saved in that six months because it will be recognized as the need to keep the historical significance. Just from practical experience, I don't think it's, I think that extending it is just, as was said, hurting the buyers and the sellers.
Mr. Pease.
So like many people here, I had some questions about this, and they echo many of the thoughts that have been stated here at town meeting. As many of you know, I try to take the time and opportunity to discuss and vet out my concerns with the individuals who we put in place to be the experts in these, and that happens to be our Historic Commission. So I did have an email exchange back and forth with the chair. And through that process, I learned that we have very, very, very honest and sincere and reasonable people on that commission. And they do not want to stand in the way of demolition permits being executed. They simply want the opportunity to validate if a, if a structure is historic and have the appropriate amount of time for a group of volunteers. And Groton runs on volunteers, and it takes a lot of volunteer hours to do what we do, many of us around here. And with no funding, no consultants, no ability to get someone to market it, to do what needs to be done, to try to move one of these structures, it can probably take a lot of time, an exorbitant amount of time, and probably more than we should reasonably expect someone to do in a six-month period as a non-full-time job. While I agree that I had thought perhaps 12 months would be a reasonable middle ground, I'm convinced that, given the current state of, of Groton and the state of our Historic Commission, that 18 months is not too long, and that it would only be used in those cases where it's absolutely needed. And at a certain point, you have to put your trust in the volunteers to help run this town, or why are we all here?
Ms. Lathrow.
I, I know you said that you investigated what other towns have for lengths for the demolition delay bylaws. Did you also investigate at all what the results of those were? Were houses saved?
Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you. Great question, and no, we did not.
Because one of my best friends lives in Medfield, which is a kind of com, similar town to ours. It's, it's built around the same time, same age homes for the, for the ancient homes. They have a two-year demolition delay bylaw, and the result of which, the houses haven't been saved, and only the very wealthy have been able to purchase those houses because they're the people who can afford to wait. So I just thought I'd throw that in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you. I, I want to be clear. Our, our objective is not to use a full 18 months if we don't have to. What, what we are concerned about, frankly, is Prescott House. I think that, I'm not trying to sow fear where fear doesn't need to be sown, but I am respectful of the fact that that house in particular, and potentially others like it, will require a substantial amount of research and time in order to properly vet whether or not a demolition permit, should it be filed, and it has not been filed in any way, shape, or fashion for that, that parcel or that structure, is going to, is going to require a lot more time than anybody may have in six months. Just looking at the process, looking at how, the time it takes to schedule appointments, to meet on a parcel, to review it, to take the outcome, to go and research that, to schedule public hearings, to then, if the property is actually put out for someone to potentially buy and move, another four to six months because easily elapse. These are the things that run through our brain as a committee, and these are the things that we're trying to plan for so that we don't lose in those unique circumstances parcels that really are part of the fabric of our community. Thank you.
Down front.
Yes, thank you. I have, I have a question and a comment. The question is, there seem to be a lot of sections being deleted and added, and I guess my question is, is this simply changing all the sixes to 18s? Or is there something else being changed here than what I'm looking at? Because there's four different sections being mentioned. All right, so it's six and 18. Well, let me, my comment then is that I, I happen to live in an old house myself. It's nothing special. I'm quite confident that if anybody came to me with an idea of I'm quite confident that if anybody came to me with an idea of tearing it down and rebuilding it when the time comes for me to move, and this bylaw was in place, they wouldn't be coming to me buying a house. That business wouldn't exist. Thank you.
In the back, yes, sir.
Judge Wheatley, a member of the Groton Historical Commission. This demolition bylaw would-- it involves both houses with character, not necessarily antique, and it gives us an opportunity, and the owner, the opportunity to preserve whether somebody would want to acquire the building and move it, or acquire the building and improve it.
Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just like to point out briefly, the commission works very closely with any and all applicants, whether it's a demolition delay permit or otherwise. In many cases, I can say with complete confidence that we have not significantly or even partially delayed a process, or for that matter, a sale. Mr. Scholman, with all due respect, we would look at your parcel and your structure, evaluate it, but you're not going to wait 18 months to sell your house or to raise it and build a new one. It would likely be a very easy decision for the commission to make and move forward, and I think that would stand pretty much the same for just about any other demolition delay or demolition permit that came over our desk. So I understand the concern around real estate resale, and I want to stress, our commission is geared to work with each individual. We're not out to cast a wand over and make a blanket decision here. This is a safety net, that's what it is. In many cases, it may very well be that we don't require the full 18 months, as I said in my statement. I fully believe that, but we'd like the opportunity for some of these more historically significant properties to have the time to be able to do what we need to do. Thank you.
In the back, Mr. Zeiler.
Yes, I believe we were talking about-- it was admitted that this was talking about the Prescott Building, and it is 100-- it was built in 1817, 1990s. It's 100, 200 years old, so 18 months, I don't think is much more time to think about that, to do the research on the historical significance of that. And if you look at that house, and then you look at Sturbridge Village, the jewel of Sturbridge Village looks exactly like that house, and it was deemed important enough to move to Sturbridge Village, why would we want to take a house like that out of Groton without fully looking at the historical impact of that house on this town? Thank you.
There are their comments under Article 16. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, Article 16 passes by a majority vote. Article 17, Mr. Geiger.
For those of you that may be a tiny bit tired of hearing my voice tonight, this one's I move that Article 17 be withdrawn from consideration. This article was withdrawn by--
Wait, hang on, Mr. Geiger. Hang on. The language we're going to use is "I move to indefinitely postpone consideration of Article 17." In order to withdraw our motion, you need to have made it first, so this is a cleaner way to do it, if you don't mind.
That's clean.
It's the same thing. So could you-- can you read the language on the screen for me?
This article was postponed--
Mr. Geiger?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you read the language on the screen for me, make that motion, and then I'll accept the motion and put it on the floor and allow debate.
I move to indefinitely postpone consideration of Article 17.
A motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone consideration of Article 17. Now, Mr. Geiger.
This postponement was requested by the originator.
A motion to indefinitely postpone consideration of Article 17 does not suppress debate. Are there questions or comments on Article 17? A motion to indefinitely postpone requires a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 17 is indefinitely postponed by a majority vote. Article 18, Mr. Geiger.
I'm back. I move that those portions of Farmers Row and Peabody Street, including sidewalks, as recommended by the Planning Board, and laid out and relocated by the Select Board, as shown on the as-built plans entitled "Plan of Land in Groton, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, Prepared by Semitours Consultant, Inc., for Groton School, 282 Farmers Row, PO Box 991, Groton, Massachusetts, 01450, dated September 5, 2018, be accepted as a public way, and then that Select Board be hereby authorized to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain such land and easements for the creation, maintenance, and operation of such portions of Farmers Row and Peabody Street as a public way, including but not limited to easements for access, grading, drainage, sloping, construction, and utilities in all or any portions of such way and the parcels on such way.
Article 18 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Geiger.
I promise, this is the last one. Over the last several months, the Groton School has installed sidewalks along a portion of Farmers Row and overhauled the road junction where Peabody Street and Farmers Row comes together. The new sidewalks increase safety for pedestrians, and the overhaul of the road junction significantly increases safety for vehicles and pedestrians alike. During the design and construction, parts of the new sidewalk and the road junction, some land belonging to the Groton School had to be used. Approval of this article allows the town to accept, as part of the existing public way, those pieces of Groton School land which were made as part of the new sidewalk and road junction modifications.
Are there comments or questions under Article 18? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 18 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 19, Mr. John Valentine.
I move to indefinitely postpone Article 19.
A motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 19. It does not suppress debate. Mr. Valentine.
Yes, this article was designed to address the use of non-contiguous lots for ancillary purposes, which has been a problem particularly in the Lost Lake District for quite some time. I had discussions with the Planning Board. The Planning Board has agreed to work directly with me and other people to craft a solution to this, and hopefully we will have a solution certainly by the next meeting, but there is a definite, I guess, sense of the Planning Board that this needs to be resolved because of the nature of the Lost Lake area, and I trust that there will be a prompt solution for it.
For the Planning Board, Mr. Berenger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the Planning Board held a public hearing on September 27, 2018, relative to this article to amend zoning bylaw, Chapter 218. The Planning Board determined that the article as written is not sufficiently specific to satisfy its stated and intended goals. Therefore, the Planning Board voted on September 27, 2018, to not recommend approval of the citizens' petition. However, the applicant stated the desire to indefinitely postpone, and we have agreed, the Planning Board has agreed, to work with all interested parties to pursue an appropriate solution to the accessory use issues, particular to the Lost Lake area, with the intent to bring forward an article to the Springtown Meeting.
Are there comments and question or questions on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 19? Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 19 is indefinitely postponed by a unanimous vote. The chair will now accept a motion to dissolve the Fall Town Meeting. It's been moved and seconded to dissolve the Fall Town Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the Fall Annual Town Meeting is hereby dissolved.